It being 7:00 PM, I think. Yes, by my clock. Thank you, Beverly. We'll call the meeting to order, the Swansea Board of Adjustment Meeting, January 11, 2021. Call that meeting to order. Due to the COVID-19 state of emergency, the Swansea zoning board of adjustment will be holding its meeting remotely using the web-based program Zoom. Board members will be participating in this meeting remotely. The public may access this meeting online by visiting www.zoom.us using the Zoom app or by calling 929-205-6099 and entering meeting ID number 842-3079-5278. Notice has been given previously to the public of the necessary information for accessing this meeting and instructions have been provided on the town's website at www.swanzenh.gov. If you have any problems, please call 6033-527411, extension 108. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll, call, vote. Which is a good segue to hand this to Beverly to call our roll.
Okay. Ann Karasinski?
Ann Karasinski, present alone in my room.
Thank you. Bill Hotwalker?
Here.
Adam Mulhern?
I am here and alone.
Bob Mitchell?
Present.
And Keith Tebow?
I'm here in my office alone in Keene.
Okay.
Let's Beverly to read our agenda for the evening.
Okay. After the call to order, the next item of business will be minutes for December 21st, 2020. The fall after that, the next item of business will be public hearings. ZBA number 21-001 variance application. Stephen Ciolino requests to grant a variance from section seven, article E1 of the zoning ordinance to construct a septic system within the 125-foot setback from a designated wetland at 64 Wheeler Lane. The subject property is shown at tax map 20, lot 13, and is located in the residence and rural agricultural districts. ZBA number 21-002 variance application. FTP Real Estate LLC requests to grant a variance from section three, article S6B of the zoning ordinance to allow additional attached signage for the full throttle power sports business at Two Sprocket Lane. The subject property is shown at tax map 51, lot 1-11, and is located in the commercial industrial district, excuse me. Other business, approval of amendments to the ZBA rules of procedure, and other business as may be required.
Thank you, Beverly. Before we get to the minutes, we have, I'd ask for folks to provide us with a vote as to whether or not any of the applications we're going to pick up tonight, take up tonight, excuse me, would be, would rise to the level of having a regional impact. Anyone have a motion?
I'd make a motion that neither of the applications tonight rise to the level of having a regional impact.
Thank you, Bob.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Adam. Been moved by Bob, seconded by Adam that the, none of the items we're going to take up tonight would rise to the level of having a regional impact. Any question on the motion? I don't understand what we're voting on. I will ask Beverly to call the roll.
Ann Karasinski?
Yes.
Bill Hotwalker?
Yes.
Adam Mulhern?
Yes.
Bob Mitchell?
Yes.
Keith Tebow?
Ah, yes.
It passes unanimously.
Okay, we have minutes from our December 21st meeting, present tonight, who were present on the 21st of December of last year was myself, Adam, Ann, Bill, and Bob Mitchell. Anyone care to make a motion on those minutes?
I'll make a motion. This is Adam Mulhern to accept the minutes as written.
Thank you, Adam. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bob. Been motioned by Adam and seconded by Bob to accept the minutes as presented. Any questions about the minutes? Any edits, changes, updates? Seeing none, I'll ask Beverly to call the roll.
Ann Karasinski?
Yes.
Bill Hotwalker?
Yes.
Adam Mulhern?
Yes.
Bob Mitchell?
Yes.
Keith Tebow? It passes unanimously.
Okay. Our first public hearing tonight is a variance application. Stephen Ciolino, hopefully I'm pronouncing that correctly, requests to grant a variance from section seven, article E1 of the zoning ordinance to construct a septic system within the 125-foot setback from a designated wetland at 64 Wheeler Lane. The subject property shown at tax map 20, lot 13, located in the residence and rural agricultural districts. Can you? For us a bit?
Yeah, thank you, Keith. We're joined this evening by the, by the property owners and also by Dale Freihoffer, who's the septic designer for the application. But I'll provide some background information and then turn it over to the applicants to present their, their variance request. So just for some, some context, 64 Wheeler Lane is on the east side of Old Homestead Highway, directly across from the airport property. Wheeler Lane is a private road. And the property, the applicants live at the end of that private road, so their home is shown here in the clearing where I have my cursor currently. As you can see, there are several other properties that get access off of Wheeler Lane. The applicant is planning on converting a barn that's attached to the existing single-family home, converting that barn into additional living space as part of their house. There's an existing septic system on the property, which is shown here where my cursor is. Given the additional living spaces, space that would be put into that, into that what is now a barn, that existing septic system couldn't support additional living space, so a new system is needed to kind of supplement that existing system that's on the property. As Keith mentioned, the town has a 125-foot setback requirement from a designated wetland. And at its closest point, the leach field for that new system, this area here where my cursor is, is showing the approximate footprint of the leach field. This would be the, the holding tank coming off of that barn structure into the leach field. At its closest point, the leach field would be 75.47 feet from a wetland area. So it's within that 125-foot setback requirement. I would just note too that there's, and this is just another, another image of the leach field, showing the setback to the, these designated poorly drained soils. There's also a open water area on the property in this area where my cursor is. And the leach field would be more than 125 feet from that open water area would be 130.4 feet from the open water. The state has a 50-foot setback requirement for the leach field from that poorly drained soil, the Department of Environmental Services, so the proposed system would meet the state's minimum requirements, that the town just has a 125-foot setback compared to the state's 50-foot setback. We did send public hearing notices out to letting property owners, and those notices were posted in town and on the website, as well as in the Keene Sentinel. I have not received any comments from members of the public on the application. I would just note too, in your, in your packet, comments from the code enforcement officer were provided. So at this time, the property owners are proposing to invert that barn into additional living spaces, I mentioned, that would just become part of the home, so this is not, not an attached accessory dwelling unit. Just given how that structure is set up, you know, there's, there's an opportunity, I think, in the future that could be an attached accessory dwelling unit. And the code enforcement officer just made a note that if that was to be used as a, as an ADU, it would be limited to two bedrooms and 750 square feet. That limit is not applicable at this time, just because it would be part of the larger residential dwelling on the property. So that's some background information. As I mentioned, both, yeah, the property owners, as well as the septic designer are here, so I'll, I'll turn it over to the property owners at this point.
May I ask a question? Matthew? I just want to make sure recorded, the closest point the leach field would be to the wetland. I have 35.47 feet. Is that correct?
All right, it's 75.47. So Stephen and Elizabeth, you should be able to speak at this point.
Well, really, it's pretty much exactly what you said, covers it very, very well. If anyone has any questions for the questions, I'm not really sure what we can elaborate on, but that we're, we're pretty much doing exactly what you, what you said, Matthew. Does anyone have any questions that we need to elaborate on?
Board members, at this point, are there any questions, Matt? Anything you want to add, Matthew, before we move on to the next phase of this hearing?
This is Ann Karasinski. I have a question. As far as, as far as the, just so I understand what the septic system is doing, you're, are you keeping your original septic system?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so this septic system is, I mean, it's going to be run concurrently with the, it's not a case where the other ones failing or you are having that sort of thing?
Right, that, that is correct. It's just unfortunate that because of the elevation difference between where the, the house septic system is versus where the barn is, it's, it's a higher elevation than where the barn is, so we couldn't tap into it?
We couldn't tap into it because it's, like Matt said, there's, there's going to be too many rooms for that facility. And it's also that that septic system, our original one, is in fair condition. It's not in the greatest condition. It's, it works, it's functional.
Great.
I would hate to tap, try to tap into it and then overexert. The other septic system, one of the main reasons we're doing this is because we have several children, a few that are in the military. And as they come home, it'd be nice to give them a place to stay rather than trying to shack up with their brother in the bedroom, the original bedroom, that have an actual spot to come visit.
Okay, and my, my last question had to do with where the new septic leach field is, is, is any part of it within, is the whole thing with, in the 125-foot setback or, or is it? Like, is any part of it?
I don't understand the question. It might be better for Mr. Freihoffer.
Well, I, I could have phrased it better. So if I, I see that the, that the part that's closest to the, the wetland is, I believe they said something in the neighborhood of 75 feet.
Correct.
So, so is the, is any part of it, you know, like beyond the 125-foot setback? Like as you get closer, farther away from the water and closer to the house?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Matthew? Yeah. It may be a question if, if Dale, Dale, I don't know if you're able to, to hear us, if you heard the question?
Yes, I did. Did that question. And to answer that question, the part that's the furthest away, I don't have a measurement on it, but it is within the 125.
Okay.
Yeah.
But what I don't, and I talked to Mr. Freihoffer about this, what I'm not totally understanding is they're considering a wetland that's right off my driveway. So it's not like it's in the middle of the woods, it's very close to the driveway what they're considered. It's a, it pitches down pretty far. And it doesn't really accumulate very much water at all. I mean, it'll puddle up and then it'll go away. That what, what is further away is that little pond area in the back, that's over 125 feet. That would have been of concern, but that's over 125 feet, that what they're considering the 75 foot, I don't understand why that is even considered wetland. It's right off the driveway. We're talking, you could walk off the driveway to it.
Yeah, and there's, there's, there's kind of a, you know, a technical way that a wetland is defined, and I'm by no means an expert on it, but you know, it does have to do with, you know, soil conditions and how, how much moisture is retained in those soils and the types of vegetation that you find and things like that. So obviously, if you come across an area of open water, that's a lot easier to identify as a wetland versus an area that has a certain level of moisture in the soil that you may or may not be aware of if you, if you didn't kind of dig down and really look at those soils. So there's a wide range of different characteristics and types of wetlands. But I can, I can certainly understand your question, Mr. Ciolino. And Mike Jasmine, the code enforcement officer is here as well. Like, I don't know if you had a comment that you wanted to provide?
Yeah, just, just really quick, I think, I think a lot of people, it's not unreasonable to forget, as big as our town is, but sometimes as small as it gets too, is this is the other side of Marcy Hill for all intents and purposes. And anyone who's had any experience or known anyone who's lived on Marcy Hill or been involved in any of those properties knows that that hill, oddly enough, is notoriously wet. All 365 degrees, every bit of it is wet. The, I've been on Mr. Chileno's property several times before and after he's owned it. And I think really, when, when we talk about the wetlands and what the 125-foot buffer was originally put in for, the spirit of it really isn't in keeping with his particular property where it may, it may fall within the, the jurisdictional wetland is set forth by the Army Corps of Engineers. It's really more land that's wet versus wetland. And I think, to be honest with you, knowing what I know about the property and to see the design that Dale put together, it strikes me as a good reasonable option for a couple of added bedrooms. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Keith, I have a question.
Go ahead, Bob.
And maybe this is for Dale. Is there any other place where this leach field can be located that would be consistent with existing zoning?
My answer to that is likely not. If we look just at the map that he has up there now, if you move it to the north, which would be up, it would likely be wet there as well. And I'll just clarify a little bit, it is not a swamp. It is not really a wetland, it's hydro soils. And it's a poorly drained, and of course, hydro soils would be poorly drained and then it would be very poorly drained, which would put you into water or wet all the time. So I know on the applications that I've looked at from Swansea in the past, they asked specifically for hydro soils, which is not a wetland. And that's where we're falling into here. It did get back to your question, if you go north, you're going to be into, it has some stormwater runoff, which is open water that runs down through there. That's actually within 50 feet, but it's not wet all the time, it's just when it's storming, there's a channel of water that comes down. If we moved on the other side of the house, and I was kind of looking at an alternative next to the existing septic system, again, we're falling into, if you could pan down a little bit further, you'll see there's another stormwater runoff and there's, I believe, a culvert underneath that little driveway where your cursor is. So you're, you're likely going to find that no matter where you put it, that's relatively close to the house. And you're going to run into a situation where we come back in for a variance. I have not walked out further than pretty much what, you know, 100 feet around the house. And there may be another spot somewhere, but then it becomes a situation where it becomes very expensive to, to push effluent out there and put it, put a system further away from the house. I don't know if that helps or not.
And I would just note quickly too, this plan is showing where my cursor is, is where the well is located on the property. And this larger circle around that well is the protective well radius, so that needs to be taken into consideration too.
Thank you. Other questions?
Keith?
Yes, go ahead, Bob.
I have a question regarding whether there's another location. In, in the application, it states that moving the leach field would, would require additional fill, state waivers, and possibly pumping. So it seems to me that just based on that, there, there is another option. Is that correct?
Probably looking for me to comment on that. I, I was working around the house within 100 feet or so. I have not explored out further than that. And I expect that we're going to run into the same situation, you've got hard pan underneath there. Down a few feet, you're going to run into a wet situation unless there's a raised area somewhere. And looking at the topo map, I don't see that. But if you wanted to move it, it would, it would become an expense, quite an expense for the homeowner. And that doesn't mean that we found a spot. I don't know if that helps.
Bill?
Unfortunately, it doesn't, but I appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
From, from a homeowner's standpoint, I, I don't see where else we could feasibly place it. The, where, where Mr. Freihoffer placed it would be the most logical to me because it, it falls downhill from the barn.
From where we want to put the, the rooms. And I was glad that Matt mentioned that if you go up north, I guess you went before, the well becomes an issue. And we can't put it anywhere near the well at all, so I can't see where else it would go. Because the barn is right next to where we want to put the leach field, it just piped it right into the, the leach field and it's done.
And, and as you go towards the house and towards, in the direction of the well, the elevation goes higher. It, it heads towards Marcy Hill Road, so the elevation just goes higher, so the...
The wells, the well, there's a big circle around the well. It's not, they can't go anywhere near the well.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying.
I can't see where you're anywhere, where else you could put it. I really don't.
I have a question, probably again, Dale, we're going to put you on the spot here. Given what we've just been talking about, is it impossible for a septic system to be on ground that's higher than the building that it services? Is, I mean, is it a matter of impossibility or is it just a matter of practicality and expense potentially?
No, actually, you could go higher. It, it's a matter of expense, you're going to have to pump up, so it requires additional tanks, pumps, and you know, plastic pipe is cheap, but then, then you're looking at fill as well. And even this one, where it is, is being filled some. But yeah, you can go higher. You could go up beyond the well, I mean, they have property up there, but I expect it's going to be the same thing. It's going to be a lot of poorly drained soils. That's what you have there. This area that is beside the barn, where it's located, is previously filled probably from, from construction of the house or materials that somebody brought in and put there. So it's, it's raised the level up, so you're away from the wet soils. And it's, it is likely the best spot right now. And, you know, walking around, yes, we could probably find another place to put it, but I don't think it's going to gain you anything. You're still going to be coming in for a variance because you're going to have wet soil somewhere that's close by.
Dale, can you explain how if you, if you walk toward, from the, from where we have the, the septic design, if you walk toward the Old Homestead Highway, how it drops down pretty significant to where you're doing your measurement too? That's way, way lower where they're talking about the wetland.
Yeah, that, that's true. So you can see the lines on the topographic map, how they're close together from where the P is for poorly drained back toward the, yeah, that P, and then back toward the system that we're proposing, they're close together, which means that you're going down a steep slope. And if you go further down slope, they're further apart, which makes it flatter, which is going to be wetter.
Excuse me, I'm having trouble seeing where in fact the definitional wetlands are on this map. Can someone help us with a cursor or do we have a?
I think Matt can.
Yeah, I can, I can try to, let's see here. I'm going to try to find something that is a little easier to see. Can you see this red icon? Yeah, okay, so this is the, the line that, this is the line that's delineating the poorly drained soils.
Now, what's the situation over there just below, where, near where the existing system is, just below the exclusion zone for the well? The other wetlands over there too?
This area?
Well, so that line that he's on now is a stormwater runoff, which means you've got a swale there taking all the water from above, coming down off the hill, and it runs right through a little swale and through a culvert and keeps on going. So that, you know, that, that's a wet area too. Now, they've got some fill, so you gotta, you've got, if you were to move it in this area, and I can't move, pan the screen, but if you pan the screen so we can see below where you are. Yep, there you go. So if you go down where his red mark is now, below that, that's a filled area, but right on the other side of it, again, you're going to be near some poorly drained soils. And so, okay, I'll be back in for a variance on that.
Okay, I, I'm uncomfortable with the term poorly drained soils. I'm familiar with definitional wetlands. And, and, and the question that this group has to answer tonight is if there are other options other than what is being proposed tonight? And I, I just, with these maps, with the absence of color, I am having trouble identifying where the real wetlands are and where, what the options are.
Well, again, I'll, I'll state that it's not, not necessarily a wetland, it is poorly drained or hydro soils, which on your, on your, I believe is still on your sheet, that we have to check that off. That that's what we're trying to stay away from.
That's what Mike was saying too. He was up here several times when he was on the phone. It's not wetlands, it's just poorly drained soil. And where it drops off is where the poorly drained soil is. So from where we are, from where our septic is to the drop off is a pretty significant distance. And then it drops off down low where that becomes, and it's not even like it says right next to the driveway, it's not really wetlands. It gets a little wet and then it comes, it goes away. So like Mike was saying, it's not really wetlands, it's just not the greatest drain soil.
I think for definitional purposes, unless Matthew corrects me.
Not Matt, I'm Mike.
We could treat this as as a designated wetland. I mean, the the semantics of it and so forth, you know, could be debated elsewhere. It's I unless, again, unless Matthew corrects me, we we're treating this as a designated wetland in the for this purpose.
So it's not a jurisdictional wetland.
Designated wetland is what we have in our in the public hearing notice.
I would agree with I would agree with Keith. I mean, we have talked a little bit about tonight how not not all wetlands are created equal. So I do think there's a difference between a wetland that is just, you know, poorly drained soil versus a, you know, a prime wetland with critical habitat. There is a difference in this. I mean, the state has different setback requirements depending on depending on the type of wetland. We just have the standard 125 feet regardless of the type of wetland. So we don't we don't have that distinction in our regulations.
Thank you, Matthew. Other questions of the board?
I don't know if that's true. Shit.
What was that, Mike?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I didn't know I was unmuted. My bad, guys. I'm trying to find this. I'm trying to look it up because I I'm pretty confident we use the term jurisdictional wetland per the Army Corps of Engineers, quite frankly. And I was on the web trying to look it up quickly and out loud, apparently.
All right. I don't recall this conversation ever coming up before. Either they're designated wetlands or they're not, and it's a scientific objective decision.
Well, you're right. This is the first time I've ever seen it. We have plenty of septic systems that are within the radius, but they're existing. So when they get when they fail, which they do, in fact, I had one today, when they fail routinely, all they need is a letter from me going out there looking at it or our health officer, Pam Fortner, saying, yes, it's failed. And then they get to go back where they were. Because oftentimes they're there because they're that's where they had to be. But again, I'm I want to check this again real quick before before we move on. And I'm going to unmute myself now for all the obvious reasons. Thank you.
Chairman?
Yes.
May I suggest that the applicant and Matthew meet again over the course of the month? And the reason I asking is that there seems to be some question as to what a wetland is and how how we define it. But I also think that if we look at it from this particular perspective, if this was a an application to to do a single family home on a lot and they couldn't they couldn't locate their septic system any further away than 75 feet, the chances are pretty pretty likely that the board would not grant the variance because it's such a significant difference. But that's when we've been dealing with the term wetland. We've not dealt with the term poorly drained soils. So it just seems to me that Matthew needs to make a determination that this is either a wetland or it's not. And if it's not, they may not need to be here. If it is, then we deal with it as a wetland. In other words, poorly drained soils, we deal with as a wetland.
Hi. Yeah, I would agree with with Bill. What I'm understanding is that the and maybe it's because I don't understand the whole wetland versus poorly drained soil, but the open water, as I understood, was 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 significantly far away from this septic system.
Correct.
Yes, it's over 125 feet, like 135 feet.
So so they're well there as far as where the land is, is obviously a wetland. And the the purpose, as I understand it, of the the this of this this overlay is to prevent contamination, pollution of the surface and the groundwater. And maybe we're talking about poorly drained soil. So perhaps perhaps I think Bill might be correct that maybe maybe Matthew should go back and and define better what what that means.
I agree, just because I think it's an important question to clarify, and I I don't think we'll be able to clarify it this evening.
I would have great difficulty approving this if we cannot clarify that this evening. So just that's my thought.
And beyond that, I tend to go ahead, Adam, do you have something to say?
I just one last question that I had. Seems like it's going this direction, so I'll just ask the question real quick. In determining the differentiation of distance between said wetland, poor drainage soil, whatever we're ultimately going to be defining this as, not knowing exactly this particular property's layout, but it would seem on the topographic map that there is a significant slope between said proposed septic leach field and whatever we're defining as either or wetland slash drainage soil. When we're making the marker as it determines distance between those two objects or those two those two points, do we take in consideration slope or is this a bird's eye distance marking? Meaning, if this is a really, really steep slope, are we talking 75 feet away? You know, as the as the crow flies? Are we talking 75 feet including the slope? I'm just curious from the measurement point of view, if it gains them some distance if you take in consideration the slope? Just I don't know if there was a difference with wetlands. That makes my question make sense?
Yeah, makes sense to me.
I can answer that. Those dimensions on there are not measuring down the slope, it's a straight line.
Yeah, that's that's how the town would measure this type of thing or any setback distance. Okay. Just so you know. Yep.
I didn't know if it was a differentiation because wetlands and septic runoff and so forth, if there was a difference. Okay, it's answered, thank you. Just trying to stretch the ruler.
Nice try, Adam, good thinking. A concern that I have, I agree with Bob, voting on this tonight would be difficult. We're charged with looking at this as a we were dealing with a variance and we're dealing with setbacks, such as a well setback and setbacks from wetlands or whatever you might call them. Where did we're supposed to determine that there really is no other place to put this on the site? I'm not convinced of that right now. We were told that the reason it couldn't be replaced where it is now is because it was a slope involved. You know, like trying to replace your your entire septic system where it is now in mind. I don't know if there was a ref, you know, that I think it was Dale that said we'd likely find poorly drained wetlands out that way as well, but I don't know that. I can't. The only thing that I see defined as as a only places that I designed that seems to be designated as wetlands, and I'm only going to use that word, would be where we're showing the 35 feet away or so. And then, of course, that potted area as well. It seems to be the only two places on this that what with what we're looking at. We're not looking at the entire site, we're looking at a piece of it. We have to determine as a board that there's really no other place to put that septic system whatsoever. And I, given what we've heard so far, I I'm not convinced of that yet because I just don't have enough data, I don't have enough information. I have only a little bit of information of where wetlands do exist and some statements about slope. So I'd need a better map for sure, a better drawing at the very least, in addition to listening to what Bill and 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 Bob are saying about information. Could I ask one question, though? Where are you with your state approvals? Has that been applied for? Is that sitting on the sideline waiting? So I guess I would ask this of the applicant or Dale.
I can answer that. So state approvals, I always go to the town first. And so this has not gone to the state, but we meet all state regulations right now. So state regulations would say 50 feet from poorly drained and we meet that. And 75 feet from very poorly drained, which would be more of a wetland may or may not be depending on what the markers are.
You, I thought you were about 35 feet away from that particular line, not 50.
No, we are 70. But we 75 feet from the closest point on that poorly drained line. So we meet state regulations.
And I apologize, I may have misspoke earlier because I've really also heard 35. It is 75. It's hard to read on on this map on the screen, but it is 75 feet.
Okay. It's 75 feet?
Seventy five.
Thank you.
If it helps any, there's the driveway which goes to the front of the house and to the barn area. So we couldn't place it there. And then if we were, again, if we were to try to make the existing septic accommodate the entire thing, as Dale said, it would just be more costly because it would be, we would need pumps and whatever to make it work going uphill. So there's to me in my from my perspective, there's no other place that we could put this septic system. Because again, the well area is off limits. If we go north, we're heading toward the pond. If we go south,
Swales, there are too many swales in the soul.
Well, that and there's the driveway.
But as I think it was Keith said, it's 75 feet in a straight line. It's not 75 feet considering that the drop off is pretty significant. So that that definitely helps because it's dropped off beyond the septic quite a bit. Even there's the land from the end of the septic to the drop off, a pretty significant amount, and then it drops off. So it's it's not like it's right at the edge of the drop off either.
And, you know, it for and I'll reiterate again, we meet all of the state guidelines, if that helps at all.
It's also not going to be used as a constant like living space. It's just going to be basically a guest spot for when my sons come back from the military. So it's not like it's going to be over taxed at all.
With your use, but we have to sort of think long term. We really the bigger picture here of just the use in general, not not the spot use. I understand what you're saying and I would agree with you. And it's not, it's not going to be overly taxed by your proposed use, but this will be there moving on into the future as well.
Right, but we got the 75 feet plus the drop off. So I don't know. I mean, we meet the state requirements all the way around. And that the only thing I was worried about was that pond that that is actually kind of a wetland area, but that's all way over 125 feet. So that's that's the only spot that looks like an actual wetland. All the others where they're talking about is just poorly drained soil. And right now I can go out there and there's no water there. For the most part, 99% of the time, there's no water there. But after a really good rain, it might puddle up a bit, but it goes right away. So it's just poorly drained soil. It's not a true wetland.
This is a public hearing. I don't know if there's any members of the public here that are on the line, and I don't think there are, but if anyone is and wants to speak, let us know. Other questions from the board? Other concerns?
I would just observe that this is also the first time that I have heard the the state has gradients for wetlands. In the past, it's either jurisdictional wetland or it is not. And I understand and for for years, for time immemorial, as long as I've been here, we've been 125 feet and the state has been 50. We deal with this over the years many, many times. And I guess the other thing I'd share with the applicants is that this board is not here to consider cost. And and like Keith said, we have to determine before we can go forward that there's no other place to put this. And so it might cost a little bit more to pump it. Isn't really the answer that you want to give to this board. Would you agree with that, Keith?
Yeah, I guess. Thank you, Bob. I do, I do at this point. Unless unless it was unless we have more data and I really this, I don't see much data speaking to that on on what we're looking at right now. I don't know whether there are other wetlands that would tell us, you know, there's if we knew what there are other wetlands in the entire, you know, on this map somewhere, it would help us to make that determination. But like literally, I we see the potted area that's spoken about and we see one relatively short line of where the P is that Matthew had shown us the P is of being poorly drained soils. I guess that's what the P stands for. But that's all we have for it's all we have for information relative to wetlands on this whole, what, 40 plus acre site? There may be more. I'm not saying there isn't more, but there is, it isn't designated. I don't have that. I don't know that. I can't tell that from what I'm looking at. So I guess I were, I guess we're sort of back to what Bob had asked for and what what Matthew had discussed is we've discussed is whether or not we, the applicant would be willing to table this applicant, this quite this question to our next meeting and be able to collect more information for this board to use before it makes its decision.
I wouldn't have a choice, I suppose, but I'd have to have Dale come out and and do that because this, you know, he's the designer, he's he's the guy that's going to be able to draw that up more to your liking because I could just explain what I have here.
I think we have a pretty good picture of what you've what you've what you've what you uncovered so far. I mean, I think I understand the picture as it's presented. But in order to make a decision on this case, I personally would need more data about where the rest of the wetlands are that might surround this. So that I can state that really that place we're looking at right now is truly the only place. And even then, I'm not sure where we would go with the decision, but but I back to what Bill said, if this was a brand new application for a new house, I'm not sure we would approve that right now. So can't say for sure how we would land, however, the people would vote it would. But nonetheless, more information for me would be very helpful, more information on this site in general relative to wetlands and and where they're located and distances and so forth.
So are you proposing that we go through the whole 40 acres and and check soils?
Well, I didn't, I didn't, you know, I just said I use the 40 acres by saying this is a big site. This isn't just a one acre parcel where we're seeing the whole thing. And obviously, you're not likely to be citing a septic system 1,000 feet away from a house, but I can't tell here whether, I mean, there was a representation made that there might be poorly drained soils in the area of the of the current where the current septic system is, but I can't see that. That was just sort of a somewhat of an offhand comment.
Typically, what we do is where we decide to put the systems, and this is where I decided to put this one, we go 75 feet around it and check soils. So, you know, if you find, I mean, you could walk this whole site and keep digging for soils and find poorly soils. If you find, I mean, you could walk this whole site and, and keep doing digging for soils and, and find poorly soils. Maybe you'll find a spot that is not poorly drained soils. But you have poorly drained soils, you know, within 125 feet. That's a lot of area to cover, 40 acres. In terms of checking for a spot to, to build. I mean, I could, I could do some walking around, but. You know, it. That's, uh. That's gonna be a lot of time.
Oh, what is it that you're looking for? What, what is the radius around the house that you're looking to have? Wetlands determined or? Because. I'm kind of having a hard time. As to how far out you want us to go. Because like I said, where the. Where the septic, the proposed septic system is. Right now. Again, to the north, there's the pond. To the, well, okay, I'll just go to the right, to the right, there's the, the well, and then as you keep going to the right. There's just elevation to, towards Marcy Hill. If you go down on the map. There's, there's a swales and there's. Yes, right down there, there's swales. And, um. Closer to the barn area, that's our driveway. That whole area is the parking lot and, and the driveway.
I can't see where else you would put it. There's no other place.
Because again, if we, if we try to make our existing septic system. Bigger. To accommodate.
The same sort.
Right, we, we still have that. Swale line that is, is not that far away. So I think we would, again, to his point, we'd be back asking for another variance.
Well, makes where it's at. Probably the best spot for sure is because of that drop off. It goes down really far after the. The proposed site. So like. I don't remember his name, I think it's Keith said, it wasn't, it wasn't measured on us, on an angle. It was measured straight out, so. We probably have more, even more distance than.
That was Adam, and I think, I think Matthew just corrected, you know, explained to us that that's how it's measured is how it's measured.
Right.
And that was Adam trying to stretch that, stretch that a little bit by using the slope.
Right.
Keith, if I, if I may, um, it, it sounds like, uh, you know, the first question to, for us to answer. Is this question about poorly drained soil versus wetland? I think clarifying that first and, um, you know, if the applicant's willing to, uh, come back in a month. Uh, you know, I'm happy to work with the applicant to figure out that distinction. Between wetland versus poorly drained soil. It may be that. We discover that. The port, this poorly drained soil is not in fact. Considered to be a wetland under our ordinance and then. A variance is not needed. Um, but if it is. Considered to be a wetland, um, I'd be happy to work with the applicant to, to. How do I say, kind of better, better represent some of the, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm hearing the, the features that they're describing. Um, on their property that, um, are limitations to where a septic system. Could be placed, and I think we could come back with more information on this map. And with things kind of better highlighted so the board has a, is more easily, more, more able to read. The issues that they're dealing with on the, on the property. But I think answering that question. About the poorly drained soil is. Kind of the, you know, first thing that we need to, to really answer.
That would be fine.
That sounds like a plan.
Matthew, if, if we're going to ask them to come back, could we put them first?
Thank you.
If it, if you're not able to resolve it, then they should. Perhaps we could do that as a courtesy. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
So if, um, what I'm hearing from the applicant is correct, and that can be corrected if need be. They're willing to. Delay the, the continuance of this hearing to next month. And we will hopefully have. I'm not hopefully, we will have more information, I'm sure, um, to be able to. Uh, pick up this ball where we have it right now and, 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 and move with it, so.
Correct.
Okay, then I, what I think we need is a motion from a board member to, to move this along to next month.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman. This is Adam Mulhern.
Thank you, Adam.
And Karasinski, I'll second that.
And the motion to table this application until our following. Uh, ZBA scheduled meeting February 11th, I believe.
It's February 8th.
Right?
The 8th, yep.
Oh, I'm amending it to February. Our next scheduled.
I'm, I'm sorry, I needed to ask a question. Matthew, is that a continuance or do we actually use the word table?
Continuance.
I think continuance, yeah.
Thank you.
I stand corrected. I will amend it to continuance.
Thank you.
And does your second hold?
Yes, second hold.
Okay. The movement's content, and seconded to continue this application, this various application to our regularly scheduled meeting in February. Any questions on the motion? Beverly.
And Karazinski?
Yes.
Bill Hotwacker?
Yes.
Adam Mulhern?
Yes.
Bob Mitchell?
Yes.
Keith Tebow?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Appreciate it. I'd like to thank the, I like to thank the applicant and the board and, um, and, uh, Mr. Freihoffer as well for, for, uh. Slogging through this with us. And Matthew as well. Thank Matthew and Beverly. Okay, we'll move on to our next. Application. And that would be FTP Real Estate. This is a variance application. FTP Real Estate LLC request to grant a variance from section three, article. S6. B. Of the zoning ordinance to allow additional attached signage, signage, excuse me. For the Full Throttle Power Sports business located at Two Sprocket Lane. Uh, the property is shown at tax map 51 lot one dash 11 and located in our commercial industrial district. Thank you, Matthew, if you could help us a bit about.
Yeah, thank you Keith. So I'll provide some background information and I know, uh, Matt, Matt Falez, the owner of Full Throttle. Is, uh, here with us this evening. So just for, for some context, um. So I have the, the property outlined and read here. Currently Full Throttle, uh, is constructing, um, a new building on the property. Uh, kind of on the, the southern, uh, portion of the lot where my cursor is. It's currently under construction. I actually met with Matt, uh, this morning and they're going to be open for business, uh, tomorrow, so. It's exciting to see them moving along, uh, on that project. So you may have seen the, the address for the property is, is, uh, Two Sprocket Lane. Sprocket Lane is, uh, this private road, um, that comes off of Route 10. It also provides access to, uh, this is Maple Hill Nursery, which you may be familiar, uh, with the rear of this property. The next slide just shows the, uh, this is the approved, uh, site plan for the property. This is the private road coming in off of Route 10. This is the, the full throttle building here. And Route 10 at the bottom of, bottom of the plan. So in terms of what our sign ordinance allows for building signage. A business is allowed to put, uh, one square foot of signage for every linear foot of width of the building. The sign is attached to, so this building measures, uh, 60 feet by 162 feet. Um, so essentially, um, they're allowed to put, uh, 60 square feet of signage on both, um, the eastern and western side of the building. And 162 feet of signage on the northern and southern end of the building. Uh, which would be a total of 444 square feet of signage. As an aggregate around that entire building. Um, what, what's being proposed? Um, this is the eastern side of the building. Uh, facing Route 10. There are four, four different signs that are proposed. But the total of that signage is 172 square feet. As I mentioned, this side of the building measures 60 linear feet, so they're allowed 60 square feet of signage. Um, compared to 172 square feet. No other link signage is proposed, um, so this would be the full extent of signage on the building itself. So in terms of, uh, notices, we did send out the public hearing notices, um, to a Butters. And posted notices in town and on the website and the Sentinel. Uh, we haven't received any. Concerns, um, from members of the public and no comments from, uh, department heads. On this application, so. Uh, with that, Matt, if, uh, if you're with us this evening, um, I'll, I'll turn it over to you. Matt, are you able to, to hear us? Oh, we'll give him a minute here.
Okay.
Well, while we're waiting for Matt, Matthew, I have a question about aggregate. So. Does that mean that a person could take all four sides of the building and aggregate all that? All those linear feet into one side if they wanted to?
Or it's a, a good question. Uh, they, they can't, they cannot do that. If, if they were allowed to do that, they would not need a variance. So it's. The way it's written, it's, um.
They, they use the word aggregate to which me means all the sides, but maybe that, I, I'm reading the, the ordinance, so. I, okay.
Yeah, it's.
You've got a message here, Matthew.
What's that?
The applicant wants to call in and is looking for a number.
Ah. Thank you, Bob.
I'm, I'm stalling for him. Doing my part.
Yeah, let me see. Chat. Okay. I mean, I may just. Find this here.
Well, Matthew finds that, uh, they're open tomorrow. And for my boss who's in the room, yes, you did get a CO. And, uh. So he's legal, so he's legal to do so.
I found the call in number.
I, yeah, I just provided that to Matt.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, yeah.
In a moment.
Yeah, but yeah, I mean, the idea behind that, that, uh, one linear or one square foot of signage for every linear foot of the building is to. To make sure that the signage is kind of proportional to. To the building wall, so you don't have. You don't have that scenario where someone was putting up 400 square feet on. A very small area of the building.
Now the smaller, but it's the perpendicular end or the smaller end, it's where people could actually see the signs, right? That's.
And, yeah, and that's so. Just looking.
If you're driving, if you're driving down Route 10, you're not seeing the long ends of the buildings anyway. And even if you were, you. You know, the roof is there, so.
Yeah. Right.
And then there's. I think it would be the northern side of this building has some sort of a. It, it's got a roof attachment to it. My guess is, is to be able to put equipment outside but undercover. Right, you couldn't, it would be very difficult to put any signs on that side at all. So. I know we've taken, we've, we've dealt with this a fair amount, Matthew, but I guess one thing I wasn't aware of. Is that, which was in your report, which is that, um. The total area of signs attached to a building shall not exceed one square foot each linear foot of the width of the side of the building. On which the sign or signs are attached. So it means. In this case, he could put 162 square feet of. Of signage along that long, either long side of that building, but only 60 feet in the shorter sides.
That's right.
Okay, I didn't realize that about our, our sign ordinance.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry about that. New computers, new system and trying to get it all to work. I was watching you guys, but. Apologize on that.
That's okay.
All right. You guys ready for me to start?
Go ahead. Thank you.
So. My name is Matt, owner of FTP Real Estate and Full Throttle Power Sports. And like Mike Jasmine said, uh, our doors are opening up tomorrow morning. And my staff and I are extremely excited to. Open up the doors and show the public everything we've been working on for the last two and a half years. And we're going for the signed variance on the east side of the Gable End. And I'll just start writing down the. Questions that we filled out on the variance application. Uh, number one, our request is not contrary to the public's interest as it would allow the public to have better understanding of the products and service we offer, attracting more drive by traffic. To our businesses and the other businesses in the area. Grant and the, the variance would observe the spirit of the audience because. Our top priority when developing this property has been visual and curbside appeal. Allowing us to display the manufacturers on the Gable End of the building will not only be aesthetically pleasing, but also attract the unknown drive by customers to our business and other businesses in the area. As I'm sure a lot of you know that that area coming off Route 10. Is a highly trafficked area. And a lot of people are turning in and out of Watermore Farm Road. It'll be more traffic on Sprocket Lane and then also coming off of. Bates Hill Road and T-Bird. So the more clarity of where our entrances, where our building is, hopefully we'll get cars off Route 10 quicker and safer. Due to the orientation of the building, because of setback and right of way restrictions, the visibility of the sides are very limited. Uh, we are requesting to consolidate our building signage to be all on Route 10 Gable side of the building. Um, we could put it on the long end, which would be north and south side. But nobody's going to be able to see it unless they're in our property already or looking at trailers over at Cheshire Horse. By allowing us to the variance, we would gain a huge amount of signage of the visibility due to the increase of elevation of the property. This will allow the traveling customers to locate us and new potential customers to discover us. Grant in this biz, or Grant in this variance would not diminish the values of the surrounding properties because our business does not impede. But complement the surrounding businesses in the agricultural field, bringing in more business for all the surrounding businesses. Due to the elevation of our property and placement of the building running perpendicular to Route 10 because of setbacks and right of way. Limitations, we are limited to the visible signage display. visible signage display on other sides of the building. The orientation of the building due to setbacks right away, the difference in elevation of the property and limited visibility from T-Bird's awning, the other side of the building would not be suitable for additional signage. Again, we plan to consolidate all the allowed building signage to the Gable End of the building and strive to make it look as clean and cut and professional and visual appealing as possible. And with that right of way, we weren't able to rotate our building 90 degrees so that we had our building going 162 feet along Route 10 so that we could have the proper requirements for the signage. So that's why we orientated it the way we did. Any questions?
Any questions of the board at this point? This is a public hearing as well. We certainly can take any questions of the public. Should there be any here? Any Butters or others that are interested, just let us know.
Keith, right now, I don't, I don't see any members of the public.
Okay, thank you. The awning that you have along the, looks like the north side and the, and the front of the, and as well as the front of the building. Explain what, why is that there?
That can be displayed for major units, side by sides, ATVs, motorcycles.
So it can be outdoors, but it's.
Correct.
And that pretty much bisects that whole side, well, at least the, the north side of the building, right? That it bisects that building, leaving almost no room for true, true public signage.
Correct.
And help me with the south side of that, of that building. What's over there? I don't, I don't have.
On this south side, we've got probably a eight to 10 foot embankment that would raise you up into Cheshire Horse's property.
Embankment up?
Correct.
Okay. So that sort of gets shielded by the land.
Right. So when you're driving by, you've got to be almost directly in front of the building to even be able to look down.
Gotcha. And the back is the back, so. Other questions for board members?
And quickly, I'm just gonna, Ben, I think we have some feedback and I don't know if anyone else is able to hear that, the audio feedback. Matt, I wonder, is your, are your computer speakers on?
They are.
Yeah, do you want to try turning them off? That might help. You should be, you'll be able to hear us on the phone still.
Let me work on that.
Keith?
Yes, Bill.
There we go.
Yeah, as a condition of, or is there a condition being proposed if the variance is granted, that no other signage will be permitted on the building?
I haven't heard that, but.
That's what we are proposing is that we would not be putting any other signage on the building.
So that signage on the front, the 172 feet, I think it's what it is, is what's, that's the sum total of what's being proposed for the whole building?
Correct.
For advertisements, advertising signage, anyway.
Correct.
I wonder if, if the applicant would consider being less specific on that? And, and the only reason I bring it up is I sat in on a meeting, Keith, you got to chuckle out of this, in Chesterfield, where the board debated for almost an hour whether the word "open" and the "hours" was permitted under their sign ordinance. And this was for, for the big deal, probably their biggest, literally biggest deal in the town. So I can appreciate the, the effort, but I'm not sure you really want to have that kind of a restriction. Should a board move in that direction?
I do appreciate you looking out because I was even thinking about the open sign and we would want to be able to have hours displayed on the door. So if customers drive up, they can understand why the doors may be locked.
Yeah, just so the board knows, we, we would not consider an open sign or hours of operation to, I mean, the signage we're talking about is really meant to advertise the business, that, you know, the type of business, the nature of business being done in a building. So I, I certainly wouldn't count an open sign as, as business signage. But it's a good, it's a good question to raise.
Not, nor would I, Matthew, which is what was so interesting to hear that board debate it for an hour. But, but in another sense, if, if you guys remember when, when we went through it with, oh, Bill Fenton and, and the changes they had to make. Matt, are there any opportunities that you can foresee that any of your suppliers would require a specific type of signage that could change from where it is now or how it is now?
Suzuki Kawasaki CF Moto, having that signage there, from anything that I can see in that I've talked to my sales reps, the regional rep, there should not be any other requirements that they would have me do in order to have their franchise.
Thank you. Thank you. Other comments or questions from board members?
And Keith, if I, if I may, Matt, I wonder if you could talk a little bit just about those companies' requirements for signage, just, you know, looking at this, you know, the full throttle business sign itself is 64 square feet and, and the, you know, the three, those three other signs total 108 square feet. So I don't know if you want to speak to that, what their requirements are for, for signage?
They require a sign on the building, but I don't have the actual size that they require. Way we came up was the three by 12 was just a look of it, you got a big empty space up there to make it look nice and so that you didn't have a big full throttle sign. And you really need that sign as big as what it is to really be able to read it for the distance you're away from the building down on Route 10, looking up the hill, the elevation change. I had a four by eight banner hanging up that they put over the Tyvek paper when the building was getting built and you couldn't hardly see that.
Yep. Keith?
Yes, Bill.
Matt, would it be fair to say that the minimum requirement for each of those suppliers is three by 12, that you could go larger, but you couldn't go smaller?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, would that, was the number eight by 12?
Three by 12.
Three by 12, thank you. Three by 12, but can, but can go larger, but not, no, no smaller. Is that correct?
That's what I heard.
That's correct.
Thank you.
I think this looks pretty good, but where I have to struggle is this is about 2.8 times the volume of signage that the ordinance allows. And when we stretch with the variance, you know, we're used to doing 10%, 15%, maybe 30%, but this is a very significant expansion, if I understand it correctly.
Yeah, we are.
Go ahead, Matt.
Looking at a total of 172 square feet. And like Matthew Buckler said, that according to the town of Swansea, I'm only, without any of the variance, we could only go up to 60 square feet. So you are correct, Bob, on the equation.
This is the kind of stuff that gives us indigestion here. Help us.
One way I'm looking at it, Bob, potentially here, is that the entire north side of the building, because of the architectural features that this kind of business requires, takes away 162 square feet of signage they could have on that north So if you take the 162, they're really, because it's, that, I don't know if you've seen it, Bob, but that awning cuts the building in half and it's, it's not a Gable End, it's the, it's, it's the other, it's the end, so it slopes down. So there's not a lot of room there and there's a lot of windows. So there's not a lot of signage there, room for signage on that side. So if you take the 162 plus the 60 in the front, we're up to 222. And they're proposing 172 on one side and nothing on the other two sides. That may be a way to soften it a little bit. I don't know if that works for you, Bob, but certainly I did drive around up that way and I looked at that awning sign and side and it does take, it pretty much takes that one out of, out of contention and, you know, the applicant has proposed, oh, go ahead, Bill. Go ahead, Bob.
Certainly the uphill embankment on the south side is something specific to the property that also precludes signage.
Right, right. The south, the south side as well.
Pretty much the same thing as you're saying with the awning to the north, the uphill embankment towards Cheshire Horse on the other side.
And certainly what they're proposing is, you know, they, they're, you know, again, we, we have to look at our variance, but there's, they're proposing less than half, if that whole building could be put signs on, I think, Matthew, was 444 was the number, I think. And they're asking for less than half of that in the larger picture.
Yeah, I think the signage looks good.
Yeah, yeah.
No question about that.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Keith, this is Ann Karasinski and I'm in agreement with you. I don't know if, Matt, you could put the picture back up with the full throttle with the Suzuki Kawasaki and CF Moto. Yeah. So if you're a passerby, driving by, if, if you don't have the signs there, you're not going to know what sort of business it is. And with the slope of the building and then you've, you know, you have that little roof overlay, so, I mean, to Bob's point, I think it's a good design and they're making the best use of the space that they, that they can use because to put the sign anywhere else, particularly on the backside of the building, would be pointless. So when I take it in aggregate, because I wanted to use that word again, it seems reasonable.
I apologize for laughing about signs on the back of the building, but.
That's okay. Yes, Mike.
So when they changed the sign ordinance and how we administered it a couple of years ago, which I was grateful for, Matthew and I are relegated to figuring out the square footage, which on its face seems like a reasonable, reasonably easy thing to figure. I would draw your attention to the full throttle power sports portion of that sign. If one were to figure the square footage, I think Matthew figured it kind of, lack of a better word, lazily, in that he figured it as a rectangle. If one were relegated to figuring each and every square inch that that sign actually consumes, I think it's less than the 64 square feet he calls out.
That's correct, Mike. We did not, I just went ahead, at the gear point to the bottom of the gear, that's where you're getting your four feet. And it's 16 feet total. So if we were to spend a little more time on, was an architect and having them get me the dimensions that are not part of the sign, we would be less than 64 sque, 64 square feet on the full throttle power sports sign.
And I use lazy, for lack of a better word, at this hour. Matthew, Velez is a lot of things, lazy is not one of them.
I know what you're getting at, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. That, that's also helpful.
Any other board questions? Anything else to add, Mr. Velez?
No, I'm excited to get a couple hours of sleep and be ready to go full throttle tomorrow.
I like that. Thank you. And Matthew, anything to add? Mike, anything to add before we, and I still, I presume there's no members of the public here yet.
That's right, Keith, no members of the public. I don't have anything to add. Happy to answer any, any last questions, though.
Seeing none, hearing none? I guess we'll close the public hearing for this and any, any discussion by the board before we go to questions?
Keith, is Adam Moller here?
Hey, Adam.
Hey, so I just had one observation, knowing a little bit about licensing and logos and so forth, along the same lines of what Mike Jasmine brought up in terms of actual square footage of the full throttle power sports sign versus what we're being, you know, taking consideration, the rectangle, they have a lot of leeway, you know, as the owner on their own logo, but Suzuki Kawasaki and CF Moto give you zero leeway. So those signs are what they are in terms of square footage and is uncontrolled by the, by the owner, just a note.
That's correct, Adam.
Thank you, Adam. Any other comments, questions, concerns of board members? We feel comfortable going to the questions? I'll take that as a yes? All right. First off, could the variance be granted without being contrary to the public interest? Let me ask a question of, if I can, before, of just process here. Do, I mean, I guess this will go to you, Matthew, right now. Do we need to roll call each of these votes? In the past, we've sort of, I've sort of, we've sort of polled the board, which is the way I would prefer to continue, but is this something that we should be polling, Bev should be polling us on each one of these, once we go, once we decide to get to that, to the question?
I, I think the, I think the polling is okay. Obviously, we need to do a roll call for the, the final vote.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But that's a good question.
Okay, thank you. Um, could the variance be granted without being contrary to the public interest? Let's go with Adam. What do you think, Adam?
No, I mean, in terms of looking at it in the opposite, I seem to gravitate towards that way of thinking of things. What is, you know, was the public gain? It's just, if this, and it's hard for me to, to, to see that gain. So from that point of view, I will say that, you know, the variance could be, could be granted, yes.
Okay. Bob?
I, I will go yes with this. I've commented before that it's a, it's, it's a significant variance, however, it's tastefully, well, tasteful and well laid out, so I'm a yes.
Okay. Bill? Oh, did we lose Bill?
Oh, you can't be that lucky, Keith.
Okay.
I would say yes for the.
I would say yes for the same reason that Bob mentioned. I thought I was following Adam, but I lost him at the end. But I, and I agree with the applicant that it does make his business, it gives the public an awareness of his business, so it would be to the public's benefit.
Okay. Anne?
I'll say yes, I agree that it, it's tastefully done, and the other businesses nearby, it, you know, it complements those, those, that signage as well.
Okay. And I'll agree, I don't see any corresponding gain to the public, should we deny this, this particular variance, that would outweigh the, the loss to the, to the applicant. So I also would, would say yes to this. Number two, would the spirit of the ordinance be observed if the variance were granted? Bill?
Yes, the applicants indicated that the, the signs that he's proposed are required by the franchises. He's also indicated a willingness to, or not to put additional signage around his building. And I think, again, it goes back to pretty much what Anne said with regard to, to question number one. So yes, does observe the spirit of the ordinance.
Thank you. Adam?
I would agree, for the same reasons that Bill had mentioned, in terms of the applicant's willingness or desire to continue only the signage on this part of the building, and, and trying to work within the guidelines of the ordinance. So, so yes.
Thank you. Bob?
A yes, and do not forget to seat me for this application.
Oh, yes, I've been thinking about doing that, sorry. As a matter of, just a matter, housekeeping, Bob Mitchell is seated for, for Brian Rogers tonight. Anne, do you concur or not with this?
I, I do, I do concur. I, I think it's, for what's already been stated, I think it's just fine.
Thank you. I too think that, given that we're less than one-half of the signage that they could have on that entire building, the spirit of the ordinance is to, is to avoid garish, maybe even dangerous signs from being just posted on a building without any thought. And I think there's a lot of thought that's gone into this, and, and again, since we're less than half of the amount of signage you could have on that building, and the agreement's not to put any more on it, I think the spirit of the ordinance is, is, is observed. Would granting the variance do substantial justice? Anne?
Yes, and particularly for the reasons that applicant has stated, allowing the traveling public to, you know, see what the building's all about, entice them to pull over and check it out.
Okay. Bob?
Yes.
Thank you. Adam?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes, Keith, and as was observed, he doesn't really have any similar options on the north and south side, and so any, any loss to the public by, by us approving this seems to be greatly enhanced by the gain to, to him, so.
Okay. I'll agree. Could the variance be granted without diminishing surrounding property values? Adam?
I'd say no evidence to the contrary has been submitted, in testimony or otherwise, that surrounding property values would be decreased or diminished in any way due to the application and the applicant's desire to put signage, so.
Bill?
I, I agree with Adam.
Thank you. Bob?
Yes, I can't say it any better than Adam.
Anne?
Yes, and in the aggregate, I think Adam has this right.
Yeah, I agree on that one. Do special conditions of the property exist that distinguish it from other properties in the area? Bob?
They certainly do, especially that embankment to the south, so that's a yes.
Okay, you've got slopes, you've got the architectural features of the building itself with the, with the awning around two sides of it, so. So owing to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other property in the area, do we agree there is not a fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance and the specific application of the provision to the property? Well, I'll go back to you again, Bob.
A yes, but did you let everyone vote on the last?
Oh, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, thank you very much, getting ahead of myself. So special conditions, do we agree that special conditions of the property exist that distinguish from other properties, as Bob had pointed out? We'll go to Adam.
For the quickness, yes, I, I do agree with Bob's assessment, and I think they've tastefully maximized the utility of the property, and, you know, in terms of layout of the building, meeting setbacks, and so on and so forth. So, but you do have that, that, that swell on the one side, that diminished view, that is nothing to their, their fault in terms of building on the property. And so, yes, so I think there's, yes.
Thank you. Anne?
Yes.
Very good. Bill?
Yes.
And I agree. So A1, owing to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other property in the area, we, do we agree there's not a fair and substantial relationship between the public purpose of the ordinance and the application of the provision to the property? Back to you, Bob.
Yes, and I'm really sorry that Brian can't see motion Mitchell in action tonight.
That's right, that's right.
It's an inside joke.
All right, Bill?
Yes, I agree with Bob.
Thank you. Anne?
Yes, I agree with Bob.
It's Adam left?
Yes.
And I agree that they are definitely owing, there are special conditions of the property distinguishing of all the properties in the area that have a relationship that, that have a bearing on this. And lastly, potentially, at least five A2, is the proposed use a reasonable one? We'll, we'll just let you close it out, Bob.
Yes.
Thank you. Anne?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Bill, is the proposed use a reasonable, reasonable one?
Yes.
Yep, and I agree. As such, we don't have to go to five B. I guess, given what we've heard, we'll enter, we, I'd entertain a motion on this, on this application.
No, I'll move that the application be approved.
Thank you, Bob. Do we have a second?
I will second. I would just add one, it was brought up in terms of potentially adding as a condition that no other signage was put in, in addition, other than open, closed, things of that nature, and that we want to add as a condition to that proposal, or is it something necessary? I just bring it up in terms of it was discussed.
All right, Bob, would you have any problem adding that to your?
I wouldn't, I think we should discuss whether it's necessary, though. I, you know, I'm open on it, either way.
And this is Anne Karasinski, I don't think it would be unfair to the applicant to, to add that, only because as surrounding areas get developed, there could be an opportunity for him to apply a sign in another location that, that would be reasonable, and I would hate to put that restriction on now.
I didn't follow that, Anne, I'm not sure which way you went.
Well, what I meant was, is that it, let's say in twenty-five or thirty years, there's been enough development so that, so that it would be useful to have a sign on another, another wall, the long, you know, the long side or the, on the other side of the building, so I, I think it maybe would be too much of a burden on, on him.
So your point is, you're supporting the original motion?
Absolutely.
Qualification.
Right, I don't, I don't think we need to put any more restrictions on him.
Beverly, help me, what do you have for, for a motion right now?
Well.
I know, I apologize.
Well, to grant the request, I'll just go to the section of the motion by Mulhern, and he noted a possible condition that no additional signs other than open hours, opened or hours be added. Karasinski said he, she would hate to put a restriction on signage for, oh, this is the following discussion.
Right, right.
Karasinski said she would hate to put a restriction on signage for the property owner if there is enough development in the future so that it would be useful to have another wall with signage. She felt it would be too much of a burden, and she asked that there be no further restrictions.
Bob, do you want to, I don't know if you want to adapt your motion or not, or restate it to the?
Well, at this point, I, I've heard one, one way, one the other, I'll hear from you and Bill, and I'll, I'll see if I want to amend.
All right, all right. Other, other board members have, have comments?
Just you and I, Keith.
All right.
I, I think, I agree with Anne on, on this one. We don't know what the, what the future would bring, and he's already restricted by, by virtue of the, the reduction in additional signage that he could put up. On the other hand, I, I agree with Adam, but I think, I think, I'm going to stay with Anne. I don't think we want to amend the motion.
So in other words, if I understand it correctly, we're approving one hundred and seventy-two square feet of signage on, and, and the variance is for putting that all on one side, and there, if you added up, say, four hundred and forty-four minus, that in essence, he may have, be able to put a hundred and sixty more square feet of signage on that south side if it ever happens again, but that we're, we're not precluding that. This, he is, he, we're approving the one hundred and seventy-two on the front, and knowing that there's potential in the future for additional signage on that building, should they so choose. Is that, am I summarizing this correctly?
And, and I just have a question quickly, that's not how I think I understand what we're, I, I was under the impression, and made this will change my, my, you know, my, my mention of, of making condition, is it's my understanding that the applicant, if we move forward, has the ability to put one hundred and seventy-two square feet of signage on the south side, and then there is zero restriction on any other side in terms of, so if they have another two hundred feet on the east and west side, you could put two hundred feet on either side of signage, and then an additional sixty, if I understand correctly, just quick math, on the north side of that, and there would be no restriction to the applicant to do that in the future. So they could have a total of whatever the square footage would allow on the north, whatever it would allow the south, west, and east, including this one hundred and seventy-two square feet. Does that make sense, Keith? What I'm saying?
I'm not sure.
Oh, but if I may, if I may jump in, so the variance is just to increase the signage on the eastern side of the building from sixty to one hundred and seventy-two square feet, so that's, that's what we're voting on, so.
That's, that's all we're doing, and, and I, what I meant was, is that if, if he, if there are opportunity for more signage came up in the future, he, he could come back and ask about it.
Yeah, so, I mean, if, you know, if that variance gets granted, I just want to, just want to say, if that variance gets granted, that Mr. Velez could come back and put up one hundred and sixty-two square feet of signage on both the north side and the south side, and sixty square feet on the west side, and not need a variance to do that.
I, thank you, Matthew, that's what I was saying, you've said it more clearly, in terms of my understanding, so there'd be no restriction, and the applicant would have the ability within the ordinance to put additional signage on the other three faces of that building without coming as, on top of the one hundred and seventy-two that we're potentially approving for the variance on the, on the, the side facing Route ten. That's, that's all I'm saying. I'm okay, I gather, with, you know, moving forward without the condition. It seems that the board as a whole seems to be pushing that direction, it's just in terms of our discussion during this application process was that, you know, we're, we're kind of thinking in terms of allowing this because the applicant is not putting signage on the three walls. And as a condition of that, we're trying to, you know, we're seeing this, this kind of a compromise being made, but with no other restrictions, the compromise, I think, becomes a little less compromise, and just allowing them to do what they want on that one side. Does that make sense? Oh, that's, that's my position anyways.
It's not making sense to me, because we've discussed in length the impracticality of putting signage on the south because of the blocking embankment, and on the north because there's only a few feet between the eve and the, and the roof for the porch, so I just, I think we, the record indicates that it's impractical to, to put signs there.
Keith?
Yes.
Matthew, if, if, if the variance is granted for one hundred and seventy-two feet, that doesn't come off the aggregate?
The four forty-four?
Right.
It, it, it doesn't unless the, unless the zoning board comes up with a condition to that effect, which you, which you could, I mean, you could, you could kind of split, split the difference, I mean, you could have a condition that sets a limit on the additional signage that can be put on the building, rather than saying no additional signage, but, I mean, you could take the one seventy-two off the aggregate, that's two hundred and seventy-two, and say, no more than two hundred and seventy-two square feet shall be permitted on the building.
Rest of the building.
Rest of the building.
For, for me, that was what I thought we were doing. I thought that the variance being requested was, was to increase the, the available square footage on the gable end. I didn't realize that it was a variance off of the four forty-four as well.
So, so it's just, and, and I apologize if I, I muddy the waters here, but it's, it's, my understanding, it's very, it's just a variance for increasing the signage on the eastern end of the building from sixty to one hundred and seventy-two square feet. The four hundred and forty square foot number, I was just kind of providing that to give you a sense of what they could do on the rest of the building.
Well, if, if, what, what I understood you with the four hundred and forty, or whatever number it was, was that in total, they could have that, that amount of side signage on the building, and, and without, without a variance, as long as they met the, the one foot per linear foot. But if we, if we grant this variance with the one seventy-two, why wouldn't it come off of the four forty-four? If you wanted to add additional signage, he'd, he'd have two hundred and seventy-two feet to add on the other three sides, should the opportunity present itself.
Just because the, the way the, the way the ordinance is written, it's just, the amount of square footage that's allowed is, is based on the, the amount of linear feet per side of the building, so it doesn't, it doesn't talk about.
Aggregate.
Aggregate, I mean, so I kind of introduced that aggregate idea, just to give you a sense of, you know, he's proposing one hundred and seventy-two, I mean, Mr. Velez has said at this point, he's not going to put up any additional signage, just to give you a comparison between what is being proposed versus what would be permitted.
I got it, my mistake, thank you.
So I'm not inclined to change my motion for approval of the application as written. However, I will withdraw the motion if this board is interested in adding conditions.
To your motion, Bob, is simply stated to put the one hundred and seventy-two square feet on the, on that side of the building.
Correct.
Do we have a second to that motion?
This is Anne Karasinski, I'll second it.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the variance to put one hundred and seventy-two square feet on what is the front side of that building, like the north, south, I think that might be east, yeah, I know, that's the east side of the building.
Chairman, a point of order, please. You have a motion on the table that was moved by Mr. Mitchell and seconded by Mr. Mulhern, and so you either need to withdraw that or modify that, and not have another motion interrupt that motion, if you follow what I'm saying.
Mulhern's not a second, and I believe Anne's was a second.
I have, that Adam did give the second.
I seconded your motion, Bob, initially. What I brought up was that we had discussed conditions potentially during our, our application discussion, and so I did not make the motion or say that we, we should put a condition, I did second yours, I just brought it up in discussion. So I will, I guess, I don't have to withdraw anything. in discussion. So I will, I guess, I don't have to withdraw anything. I'm just bringing up what I thought was something we discussed. So I will continue with my second. I think I've answered or been answered my concerns in terms of our discussion. So I will continue to move forward with my second to your initial motion, Bob.
Go back to the original motion, from what I understand, with a second by Adam.
Yes, you you have a motion on the floor by by Bob without any conditions.
Yep.
A second to that by Adam. Then there is opportunity for discussion. You have a long discussion involving that, and you still have that motion that you need to vote on.
Okay. Does the board understand the motion we have in front of us right now? I believe everyone does. So it's been moved and seconded. I guess we'll go down through the roll.
Okay. Ann Karasinski?
Yes.
Bill Hotwalker?
Yes.
Adam Mulhern?
Yes.
Bob Mitchell?
Yes.
Keith Tebow?
Yes, thank you. Motion carries. All right. Thank you, Mr. Velez. We have one thing left on our agenda. Well, we've been on one thing, but one substantive thing. We have been working on amendments to those ZBA rules of procedure. Those were finally codified and put down in writing. Anyone have any? Matthew, have anything to add here at this point in time on this on this particular issue?
No, Keith. So these are the the same updated rules of procedure that the board reviewed on December 21. Your rules of procedure require that they be amended by a majority vote of members present, and that can include alternate members. And we were required to post a summary of those amendments to the rules of procedures at least 10 days before this meeting in three public places. So I did post those at Town Hall, the post office, the West Swansea Post Office, and on the town's website on December 30. So we've satisfied that requirement. So I think at this point, the only thing that's left to do is to make a motion to to approve those amended rules of procedure.
All right, anyone so inclined? Looking for for a motion to approve the amendments to the ZBA rules of procedure that we've been discussing and that have been that have been a
I move that we approve the amendments to the rules and procedures that we reviewed on the December 21 meeting.
Okay, do you have a second on that?
Ann Karasinski, I'll second it.
Got to speak up, Adam. I saw you, but Ann was over there. So the move by Bob and seconded by Ann to approve the amendments to the ZBA rules of procedure that we've been through a number of times, most recently in December. Any question on the motion? Seeing none, I'll toss the ball to Beverly one more time.
Ann Karasinski?
Yes.
Bill Hotwalker?
Yes, yes.
Adam Mulhern?
Yes.
Bob Mitchell?
Yes.
Keith Tebow?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other business to attend to? Matthew, is anything else that's come to your mind? No?
I don't have anything else. Good evening.
Any other board member have anything else? Seeing, hearing none, we'll move on, and we can, I guess, our next order of business would be entertaining a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Right, second?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded a motion to adjourn. No discussion on this. Beverly?
Ann Karasinski?
Yes.
Bill Hotwalker?
Yes.
Adam Mulhern?
Yes.
Bob Mitchell?
Yes.
Keith Tebow?
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes. You are adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.
I won't see anybody until March. Wish my wife luck and send her your thoughts and prayers. I appreciate it.
Yes, good luck, Adam.
Good luck, Adam.
All right, take care, everybody.